Good evening. This 2025 organization meeting slash work session of the Board of Education of the Cleveland Municipal School District will come to order. Happy New Year to everyone. It's great to be here at our first meeting of the year. Mr. Stockdale, will you please call the role?
Ms. Alacod?
Yes, here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Briggs?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Reverend Jones?
Mrs. Lebron?
Here.
Mrs. Peak?
Here.
Dr. Shredar?
Here.
Mrs. Welchow?
Here.
There are eight members present.
Thank you. I ask everyone who wishes to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Board Business Meeting of December 10th, 2024.
So move.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Before we move into our CEO report, I am, of course, as always, pleased to be here at Garrett Morgan High School this evening, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention and acknowledge two tragedies that the school community very recently suffered with the loss of intervention specialist and cross-country coach Alexis Vega and student Elijah Harris. I'd like to take a moment and ask everybody for a moment of silence as we acknowledge those losses. To the Garrett Morgan community, our sincere condolences for this series of recent tragic events. And next, I'd like to introduce our CEO to present this evening's CEO report.
Thank you so much, Chair Alacod, and welcome back and Happy New Year. We're excited to be back and in full swing and definitely echo the sentiments that Chair Alacod share in terms of what this, the Garrett Morgan community is facing. And I know even just coming back off a break, there's several of our school communities facing similar situations. And so, we're uplifting all of our school communities and just the city of Cleveland and keeping that in our hearts and minds. I am also excited that this month, January, is School Board Recognition Month. So you've probably been seeing some blitzes on our social media page highlighting our Board members. My CEO focus, which went out this week, was celebrating and uplifting these amazing leaders that I am privileged to work alongside and who advised me and set policy for the district. And so, we just want to acknowledge all of our Board members and we'll be celebrating them throughout this entire month. So thank you for your leadership and let's give our CMSD Board of Education a round of applause. Also for tonight, for my CEO report, I'm happy that we have Glenville High School here for this month's school spotlight. And it's also a perfect timing because I know just last night, we were recognizing a Tar Bladder football team at City Hall and just for their amazing season that they've had this year, but over the years. And it's not just our football team, track cheerleading, and just an amazing school culture. I had the opportunity to have lunch with the students, maybe a couple of months ago, maybe last month it was, and just to hear their reflections on the school community, the leadership at the school. I know that everyone is working really hard there. So really excited to have Principal Kendra Holloway come up to share this month's school spotlight, Glenville High School.
Thank you all so much. We're excited, we're happy, we're privileged to be here today, excited to represent Glenville High School, and thank you for the opportunity. And we're honored to present, we want to recognize you for Board Appreciation Month and so at your By Your Name tag, we have left a gift for you. You can look at it now if you like, but accept that as a gift of thank you for all you do for our children, really and sincerely. So we thank you. But we are Glenville High School, home of the Tar Bladders, and I'm Kendra Holloway, the principal, and I am very blessed to have with us our Assistant Principal, Sierra Malone. We also have with us our Planning Center Instructional Assistant, Teresa Griggs, and Stephen Chandler is our campus coordinator, and Jalisa Fair is our secretary. I don't get my glasses, I won't see the rest of this. Thank you, Mr. Brown, thank you. Who are we? Our general population is made up of 67% regular education, 29% special needs, and 4% ELL. We have 118 ninth graders, that number has gone up because we have enrolled seven new students. We have 86 10th graders, 50 11th graders, and 61 12th graders. Our student ethnicity is comprised of 96% African-American, 3% Hispanic, 2% white, and 2% other. We're 53% females and 47% males. Our staff consists of 67% African-American, 24% white, and 9% other.
At Glenville, there's more that we need to say.
And we're going to give this right now to our Planning Center Instructional Assistant, who is very excited, we're going to zoom the cameras in over here, to our wonderful Tar Bladder table, and she's excited to tell you about all the marvelous things that happen at Glenville daily.
First of all, I want to say, good evening. And then, I want to say what Glenville wants to do is make our students or our scholars marketable. Now, I am going to tell you of some of the things, I'm going to start with our CTE. We have a nursing program. And in our nursing program, once you take the classes and pass the certification, when you leave Glenville High School, you are an STNA, marketable. You're able to go into the work field and get a job. In our dental assistant program, once you take the classes, pass the certification, you are a dental assistant, which means you're marketable. Once you go to any dental clinic, you can say, can I get a job? I'm certified, and they can get the job. We also have criminal justice. Now, criminal justice, it takes, it has a broad, it has a broad plateau. But you take those classes, you pass those certifications, you are a 911 dispatcher leaving Glenville High School. And we also have a lot of other things. We have GROTC, we have WAVE, which is Stop the Violence, we have CTAG, and of course, we have sports. But we really want our students to be well-rounded and marketable when they leave high school. Even though we want college to be a part of it, but for those who cannot go or are not ready for that yet, but we push them to go forward in that. But I think that my time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Griggs.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. At this time, we're going to transition and look at our instructional goals that we have for this academic school year. So we're going to look at our math goals. We're looking to increase from 4 to 13% for this academic school year. We're going to use and leverage our AAP goals in order to meet those goals. We're going to focus on math discourse and skills to solve mathematical problems. For ELA, we're expected to increase from 16 to 25%. Again, we're going to leverage and use our AAP goals, which we're going to focus on increasing student vocabulary and increasing reading comprehension. Our graduation goal, so we would like to increase from 44 to 56%. Again, using and leveraging those AAP goals, we need to early identify off-track students. We're going to develop an academic plan for all of our students so that we can make sure that they're on track and they are ready to graduate on time. Currently, our four-year graduation rate is at 53%. Our five-year graduation rate is at 65%, and we are a two, have a two-star report card CFL, so speaking about CFL, as you can see, with safety, academic challenges, and support, we are nearly 70% across the board. For SEL, we are at 21%, and we're at 8% excellent for SEL. We are, we need 71, we're at 71% needs improvement. Currently, we have a total of 15 suspensions for this school year, which has decreased dramatically from last school year. When we speak about attendance, our ninth graders are at a 67% attendance rate, 10th graders are at a 67% attendance rate as well, 11th grade, we're at 75, and for our seniors, we're at 78%.
Here's our areas of focus. Of course, empowering literacy through vocabulary and comprehension, fostering that mathematical discourse conversations and critical thinking, our culture, building connections with students, family, and the community, promoting respect and collaboration through peer relationships. Every day, we call ourselves Peaceful Glenville, where we handle things a peaceful way with kindness. Expanding our career and college readiness, we have several students who attend High Tech Academy, and driving student success, increasing the graduation rate, and as Ms. Malone spoke about, just monitoring those students to make sure they're on track to graduate as much as possible. All right. This is Glenville Tar Bladders. They're not like us. We're more than athletes, we're academic scholars. We're celebrating the state playoffs, yes, golf, Senate champions, the number of students who are on track to graduation increasing, 10 students with all As on their report cards, increased attendance percentage, quarterly report card incentives, planned college tours, award celebrations, sports banquet, you name it, we're celebrating our scholars at Glenville. This is the place you want to be because there's none like us. Thank you so much. Special thanks to my boss, the man, Andrew Coontz, and also to Anthony Brown for helping us out, to the Glenville staff and students, the reason why we're there, and we thank you all for all you do.
Any questions from the Board? Dr. Shredar?
Thank you so
Thank you so much for your presentation. I learned a lot, thank you. I have a question. I'd like you to spend just a minute talking about, so you talked about the achievement gaps and what your goals are. Can you say a little more about the one slide where you talked about the areas of focus and how those areas of focus are going to help you achieve with your, with the growth goals that you have for both the math and for literacy? I think the community would like to hear that.
Sure. So our areas of focus, pretty much, if you go back to that slide, empowering through literacy and vocabulary, it pretty much aligns with our AAP, our academic goals, so it's something that we work on continuously during our 50-minute professional development. So such as literacy through vocabulary and comprehension is one of our target areas, so we work, of course, with the Sabas curriculum, and we pay special attention to utilizing vocabulary, making sure students understand it, utilizing it during math and in math discourse, so they're familiar with the vocabulary for testing purposes, and also comprehension, using those strategies to make sure they understand what they've read. So the rest of it is also from our AAP, so the mathematical conversations, getting students to talk about math, use the vocabulary, use the terms, talk with each other and work with each other. So these areas of focus are things we utilize in the class every day, and we impact with our AAP. And just hoping those strategies help improve our scores.
Ms. Peak?
I'm just wondering, I'm so excited to hear about the different programs you have that prepare students for life after school.
Yes.
How many years have you been doing that, and what kind of success has the kids, have they come back to tell you how many jobs they've gotten, or some things that I know they'll see you somewhere and say, I'm so happy I went there and did that?
So this is our first year there, we've been there four months. However, during that four months, we've had several students come back who are now police officers who went through the criminal justice program. So leveraging and talking with the teachers, there's been plenty of student success. Now, how many years? I can't speak to, but I do know once the merger happened between MLK moving into Glenville, they brought in the CTE programs with them, such as the nursing, dental, and the criminal justice. And that's been a long, they've had that a long time at MLK, I can't speak to the number of years. But since the merger with Glenville, okay, look at Ms. Griggs' nose, this is our historian right here, she's ready to get an answer. Come on, come on, Ms. Griggs.
What I really want to say is, I didn't get a chance to say that, but quite a few of our hospitals already take our students. So our students get to go to VA Hospital, and, well, I know, well, all I can remember now is VA Hospital, I don't know, but VA Hospital take our students, and our students, when I take my dad to VA Hospital, I see our students there who've been, been there for quite a few years. I used to take the special needs students there to volunteer. So we also have that program that our kids go there. And the dental, the dental students, they also go to different dental clinics. And not only do they, they work on our teeth, when they have the dentist come in.
Now, that's real progress.
It is, because we actually have a state-of-the-art lab for our new dental students. And what else? Oh, criminal justice, yes, you already spoke on that about the police academy. So, yes, so it has been very successful, and we've been doing it for quite a few years because we started at MLK. And then, so, yeah, so, yes, and it's been very successful.
So you took, you took good care of that when it got transferred? Yes, okay, thank you, congratulations.
I'm sorry, also hoping to leverage our students in the criminal justice program into security officers and CMSD. We also surveyed our students, they're interested in plenty more CTE programs such as cosmetology, the education track, so we'll work on those as well.
Great, great, congratulations.
Any other questions? You are, the students told me to let you know that you are free to visit any day, any time. Feel free to stop by and you can see what they're doing, so you're welcome.
Mr. Phillips, do you have a question?
Ms. Holloway, I do have a question. Could you speak to, a little bit to the importance of, and I see here one of the bullet points being building the strong connections with the students, families, and the community? Can you all kind of speak to how important that connection with the families and the community is to building a healthy school environment?
So we believe that our school is a reflection of our neighborhood. So Glenville has a strong community of people, and often what happens is the students who are there, their parents went to Glenville, they tend to stay in the community and the schools. So we tend to treat it, we address each other as family. So it just helps them to know that you're cared for, we're concerned about you, and that connection with letting the students and families know just what we're doing in the school, that we have an open-door policy, has been important in leveraging relationships. And also, when kids like you, they work for you. And not that we do things to have kids like us, however, when they know you care, they rise to the occasion. So it's been impactful in helping just the culture, and I do want to say this, Glenville is where my parents met, this is why I'm here. So it's great to be there as principal.
Can I just, both of my parents also graduated from Glenville High School, so love the love story there.
Yes, 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 yes. Any other questions for us?
Dr. Morgan?
Mine's not more of a question, just a comment, as you guys are still building the strategy, I know you guys are the new leaders at the school, and Glenville just has such a rich history and continues to have that through the extracurricular programs, you're talking about some of the CTE programs. Closely connected to Dr. Sridhar's question, I know in the slides you're very high level in terms of those strategies, but really connecting the goals that you're trying to have to the movement that needs to be made to really understand the impact. When I see the low attendance rates, the attendance rates are really concerning, the graduation rates concerning, and I know this has been historic, but all of these things are really connected, and so I would really encourage, I know we're entering into AAP season, to really do some root cause analysis, because you have so much going for the school on the culture side, on so many of the programs. And I'm curious to, as you guys do that, find out, students that are really successful, you know, well-rounded, what are the things that are working, and seeing if those strategies can be replicated. But so exciting to see the progress, and I'm really excited for your leadership there.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you all so much.
All right. While the board does not usually vote on resolutions at our boardwork session, we do have three resolutions that the board needs to vote on this evening. First is Resolution 5.01. The Chair will now entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 5.01, adopting a schedule of regular meetings and rules regarding notice of special and regular board meetings for calendar year 2025. Thank you. Since this is the Board of Education's organization meeting for 2025, the board is required, under state law, to adopt this resolution establishing its schedule of regular board meetings for calendar year 2025, and its rules for providing notice to the public of its meetings. Under this resolution, the board will continue to meet twice each month during the school year, usually, but not always, on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. Typically, the first meeting of the month will be a work session held at a school or other district facility, such as Arnold Pinkney East Professional Center or here at Cary Morgan High School, and devoted primarily to information gathering, discussion, and deliberation on issues or topics for future board business meetings. The second meeting of each month will be a business meeting held in a school and concerned primarily with the consideration of and voting on of resolutions. The board, of course, reserves the right to vote on some resolutions at our boardwork sessions when it is necessary or prudent to do so, as today. And as needed, of course, the board will hold special meetings as well. All of these meetings will be open to the public and will be properly noticed to the public, consistent with the Ohio Open Meetings Law. Any necessary changes to either the dates or locations of any of these meetings will also be properly noticed to the public. At its monthly business meetings, the board will provide an opportunity for public participation by interested community members who submit a request-to-speak form online or by telephone by 12 noon on the day of the business meeting. Are there any questions or discussion from board members? Dr. Morgan, any comment here? All right, Mr. Stockdale, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Mrs. Lebron?
Mrs. Peak?
Yes.
Dr. Sridhar?
Yes.
Mrs. Welchow? Motion passes with eight votes.
Thank you, the resolution passes. The Chair will now entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 5.02, approving a process and timeline for the development and adoption of board goals and guardrails. Thank you. All right, as some of you may know, the Board of Education unanimously approved a resolution to work with the Council of the Great City Schools in September 2023 to begin a board development project focused on effective governance in service of improved student outcomes. We began this work because we wanted to make sure that we were impactful in the way that we govern, and because we knew that, like many school boards, we had room for improvement in how we put the focus of our work into student outcomes. Just as we expect our students and our educators to learn and grow, we believe we must model the same as a board. Throughout this work, we seek to become, or rather, we will become relentlessly effective as a board. We've been working for over a year with the Council of the Great City Schools to learn about effective board governance through a framework developed by A.J. Crable, the Director of Governance at the Council. A.J. has worked with many of our peer districts across the country as well. His student-focused, student outcomes-focused governance framework creates an opportunity for school board members to clarify and substantially redefine their roles. Our board has owned the challenge and the process in making a shift to putting the focus of our meetings and our time together on our students' educational outcomes. We've spent a great deal of time at board retreats, learning about the framework and of how to apply it successfully in our district. I also want to note that as our new members joined the board, they've spent a great deal of time doing extra time with the Council of the Great City Schools to get up to speed, and I want to recognize and appreciate that as well. Because of how we're changing our focus, the community can expect to see the content of our future board meetings change to align with supporting student outcomes improvement, and we're doing this to put the board's focus exactly where it belongs, on what we, as a district, will be achieving for students, period. We owe this to our students. Our schools in our district exist to give them meaningful educational opportunities. The next step in our process will be to develop goals and guardrails for the district. I want to clarify, before we move on to this, that this will be a separate project from the long-term planning work that the CEO and his team are leading. This work will be led and planned by the board, with the support of our district staff, of course, while the long-term planning work will be led by and planned by our CEO and staff, with the board's input and involvement, and ultimately, decision-making. As part of this work, at our last board meeting, I asked Dr. Sridhar to lead an ad hoc Goals and Guardrails Process Implementation Planning Committee, consisting of himself and Ms. Welchow, in order to solidify a timeline and some of the outreach process pieces to formally recommend to the board. I will now call on Dr. Sridhar to provide a report and introduce the committee's recommendation on timeline and next steps. Dr. Sridhar?
Thank you, Chair Ellicott. The Goals and Guardrails Committee of the Cleveland Board of Education met on January 9th, 2025. In attendance were board members, Negamansridhar, myself, Diana Welchow, and Charlene Jones. In addition, Carol Beckley from the Council of the Great City Schools was in attendance to help us guide the process. The committee discussed the deliverables that have been asked of the committee, which is one, to recommend an outreach plan, including a timeline, as well as a review of stakeholder groups and outreach plans. The committee discussed the inputs that the board has received from the community in the last few years. In particular, we talked about three main sources of community input. One, in chronological order, the first being Mayor Bibb's listening tour in 2022, the board engagement of the community during the search process for the new CEO, for the process that brought Dr. Morgan to us at CMSD, and then Dr. Morgan's own listening tour during his first year in CMSD. All three of these outreach efforts were extensive and involved several meetings and touchpoints with members of the community all across the city. The board has reviewed these reports from these sources several times. The committee is recommending to the full board that we use these sources as the starting point for the board's process of developing goals and guardrails. Specifically, we're recommending that the board use the next four weeks to review these materials and inputs that we have received, and use those, use that feedback from the community at the scheduled retreat of the board on February 15th to develop draft goals and guardrails. These draft goals and guardrails will be communicated to the community broadly with the aim of seeking community feedback. The board will lead and run a series of engagement events in the community with help from district staff, but again, like the Chair said, run by the board and with members of the board present at every one of these community engagement sessions, where we will present our draft goals and guardrails to the community and seek feedback with the goal of, the aim of bringing forth to the full board a final set of goals and guardrails for the Cleveland Metropolitan School District to be adopted at our meeting on March 18th, 2025. I want to make one quick note about this process. This is, you know, we're talking about a fairly extensive process that will happen over the next nine weeks. The board fully recognizes that this is an aggressive timeline, but at the same time, we also recognize that our community, our students can't wait, right? We, this is a, this is a process that this board feels is important, and we owe it to our students, our community, our families. And so we are going to take the, do the work that it takes to do this process well, with the right level of engagement of the community, for us to clearly articulate as a board what we expect of the district, what we expect of the leadership of the district, and what we will, and then, and also to articulate to the community what we will deliver to the students and families and community members of the city of Cleveland. So that's the, that's the recommendation and the resolution in front of you.
Thank you, Dr. Sridhar, Ms. Welchow, and I also want to thank Ms. Jones for attending and participating in the committee meeting. Is there any question, is there any discussion or any questions from board members? Dr. Morgan, any comment you'd like to add?
Just really grateful, really grateful for the process and everything that the board has done to bring this to, bring this forth. This is going to really shape the path of the district and really making everything we do, which is our primary business, really, on how our students are doing. And really excited that that's going to be shaping our board meeting, board meetings, really grateful for the board and their leadership on this.
Thank you. I'm also very grateful to the board for all the work on this that has been put in over the last year or so, and excited to ask Mr. Stockdale to call the roll on this motion.
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Mrs. Lebron? Mrs. Peak?
Yes.
Dr. Sridhar?
Yes.
Mrs. Welchow? Motion passes with eight votes.
Thank you, the resolution passes. The Chair will now entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 6.01, Amending the General Fund Five-Year Forecast.
So move.
Thank you. Dr. Morgan, could we please have an explanation of this resolution?
Yes, on November 19th, 2024, the board approved the five-year forecast, which included additional financial support resulting from the passage of the issue 49 levy and bond issue. That forecast included the new levy revenue underlines 13.010 and 13.020. Revenue from new levies. The Ohio Department of Education workforce requested that the forecast be amended to report this new revenue underlying 1.010. General property tax revenue, general property tax real estate. The attachment to this resolution entitled "Five-Year Forecast: Technical Revisions" shows that technical change. There is no financial impact resulting from this technical change, and it's the new five-year forecast with this change is attached in the notes and also in the resolution.
Any questions from board members?
Excuse I?
Mr. Briggs?
Yes, I do have a few questions, which I'll deal with Mr. Stockdale after the meeting, relative to... relative to, excuse me, total revenue and other sources compared to actual 2024 and 2025, but there's no need to take time in this meeting.
Okay, so you'll do it afterwards?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Briggs, to clarify, the questions are not about the particular change that's being proposed today?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I should have raised them before, and that's why there's no need to discuss them.
Okay, great. I'll check in with you, and we can also present them to the public at the next meeting so that the information is shared if it hasn't been before. All right, Mr. Stockdale, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Alacott?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pe, Mrs. Lebron?
Yes.
Mrs. Peak?
Yes.
Dr. Sridhar?
Yes.
Mrs. Welchow?
Yes.
Motion passes with eight votes.
The resolution passes. Now, this evening, we have eight resolutions in the areas of finance, operations, and equity and culture that will be presented to the board for discussion only. The board will be asked to consider the adoption of these resolutions at our January 28th Board Business Meeting. Dr. Morgan, would you please present these resolutions?
Yes, first, we have our finance resolutions. 7.01 authorizing the acceptance of gifts and grants from the Cleveland Foundation, Cleveland School of the Arts Board of Trustees, Cuyahoga County, Families First Health Services LLC, Maryland Shaya and Maryland Shan, Shan Stone, Stonem, and Gary Stonem, Step Up Family, Step by Step Family Services LLC, the George W. Codrington Charitable Foundation, and the Chef Anne Foundation, and authorizing the CEO to spend the funds in accordance with the terms and conditions of the gifts and grants. With Resolution 7.01, the board will be accepting the following gifts and grants and authorizing the CEO to spend these funds in accordance with the terms and conditions of the grant. From the Cleveland Foundation, a grant in the amount of $750,000. From Cleveland School of the Arts Board of Trustees, a gift in the amount of $217,058. From Cuyahoga County, a grant in the amount of $207,000 and 800, $207,866.71. From Families First Health Services LLC, a gift in the amount of $10,000. From the Stonem Foundation, a gift in the amount of $6,500. From Step by Step Family Services, a gift in the amount of $10,000. And from the George W. Codrington Charitable Foundation, a gift in the amount of $50,000. And finally, from the Chef Anne Foundation, a gift in the amount of $247,000.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions from the board on this resolution? Mr. Briggs?
Yes, could you clarify a little bit the Cleveland Foundation, Gun Foundation grant relative to its long-term planning aspects?
Yes, so the district, as many know, and we're going to continue to be talking about our long-term planning efforts that we're undertaking, it's alongside of the board goals and guardrails processes, you just heard, long-term planning is a big initiative that our district is taking on to really support the student experience. I've been talking about making sure we have high-quality programs at scale, equity and access at scale, while also doing that when looking at our finances. We are so grateful to the support of the, from the support of the Cleveland and Gun Foundations to support us in this effort for long-term planning, to look at some of the inputs. So one of the areas, we have Bell Creek that is supporting our work on looking at modeling, looking at trends in other districts enrollment patterns, some of the other studies that will help us with the information to help make forth some of the recommendations, and then Attuned Educational Services, which will be doing a high school study to really understand the long-term impact of some of the work that has taken place to date, some of the work that has happened in the Cleveland study with some recommendations, given our current reality, current trends, current data of how we may move forward. So we're really grateful for their support.
Will that dovetail into what the board is doing as far as long-term planning?
Well, this will help in what we're bringing to the board in terms of the recommendation, and then, you know, it's all of the information that you guys will be presented during these meetings, as well as any retreat meetings that we have as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Briggs, the Cleveland Foundation is also supporting the board's work and has supported the work with the Council of the Great City Schools, too.
Great, thank you.
Okay. The chair, oh, go ahead. It's your turn, still.
These next two resolutions are operations resolutions, so 8.01 authorizing the CEO to issue a purchase orders to Collins Equipment Corporation for the complete construction of the above-ground fueling site at the Lake Center Depot in the amount not to exceed of $240,000. The district operates two fueling sites, the East 49th Street Depot and the Lake Center Depot. In 2022, the board approved a $1 million, well, approved $1 million for infrastructure changeover at these depots. This plan included both depots having underground tanks removed, new above-ground tanks installed, few, new fuel dispensers and operating systems were also installed. The East 49th Street Site was identified as the most in need as the depot was completed in the opera, and in the operation from, for the beginning of the 23, 24 school year, and all associated invoices were paid in full. Work on the Lake Center Site started in June 24, with the completion being in November 24, experiencing delays in inspections and permits and new city safety requirements, which caused price increases in material costs and added safety-related construction. The original funding fell short, and this resolution, once approved, will satisfy all the funding obligations and ensure that both sites are in full operation to the district's specifications. 8.02, Amending Resolution 2024-6805B, which authorized the issuance of term agreements and supplier contracts for transportation services for students attending non-public charter, community, and non-public schools, and Resolution 2024-6806B, which authorized the issuance of term agreements and supplier contracts to multiple cab and van suppliers to transport special education students, foster students, and McKinney-Vento students for the 24, 25 school year, but authorizing an additional amount not to exceed $6,854,400. This resolution amends two previous resolutions that maintain compliance with the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, or Workforce Standards, by providing transportation services to non-public charter schools, non-public schools, and for special education foster and McKinney-Vento, which are our homeless students, an additional amount not to exceed $6,854,400. Additional funding in the amount of $3,632,400 is needed to pay community bus services, right-way transportation, and ODS, transportation to complete the 24, 25 school year. Due to a driver shortage, the district transportation department needed to repurpose 24 schools aligned with 29 bus routes previously serviced by district drivers to community bus right-way and ODS. There was also an increase in cab and van obligations in service of special education students with IAPs, or students in foster care, and homeless students for an additional $3,222,000. These changes are set forth in the attachment A to the resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Morgan. Any question? Any questions or discussions from the board? Yes, Ms. Welchow?
Thank you. Just a housekeeping question. These additions, are they reflected in the forecast that we just reviewed and approved?
They are not reflected in this forecast. They'll be reflected in future forecasts in May, and potentially in budget revisions as well during that time period.
Okay. Is the, maybe a question for both Chair Stockdale and CEO Morgan? Is the idea to balance these increases sort of elsewhere, or is this going to be a net sort of reduction?
I can have, if Chief Stockdale have any comments here, or also Chief Thompson?
So, some of these expenses will be offset by state aid that we'll receive, not necessarily this year, but in future years, because some of this does have to do with transportation of special education students.
Okay.
And that's something that Chief Thompson can speak to more. I think as we go through the fiscal year, we balance what we're seeing in the monthly forecast, or the monthly report with the five-year forecast, and so, we're still a little bit early to say whether or not we would need to revise it up or down from there, but it's something we would look at, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes, that was one of my questions. I have several. With respect to the construction of the above-ground fueling site, I assume that was not budgeted?
Did you have more, either, I see we have Eric as well, so either Chief Thompson or Eric?
And was that, in addition, was that a part of the contract, or was that a gratuitous addition to the contract?
So that, yeah. The initial budget for this project for both depots was set at $1 million. As we got into the work of going underground, digging underground, we, there were things such as soil contamination that we had to deal with, the cost, the extra costs, and then there were, at our 49th location, Cuyahoga Heights, there were things that they wanted us to put in, to reflect what they wanted for their city, and then with the city of Cleveland, we dealt with some other changes as well, and all of that increased that price from that initial $1 million up to that 1.2.
I see. Okay, and I assume that wasn't budgeted, so that'll come into?
No, it, right, it was not initially budgeted.
Okay, thank you. And then, with respect to the additional amounts for transportation, it says you're authorizing an additional amount of $6.854 million. That's on top of how much originally allocated?
The original allocation was $6 million.
Okay, so now we're at $12,854?
So, yeah, so the cabin van, the initial was $6 million per cabin van, and then for community bus, ODS, and right-way, it was $3 million. So that total was $9 million between the special education and the non-public charter, for a total of $9 million initially for that.
Now, I'm confused, so it's not, it's $6 million on top of $9 million, or?
No. $6 million for cabin van service.
Okay.
And then there was a $3 million for community bus right-way and ODS.
Okay, so now it's a total of $9 million and some change?
Yeah, now it's a total of, an additional $3 million is needed to, for ODS and right-way and community bus, and additional $3 million is needed for cabin van services.
All right, and the total is?
Total, a total of between both, is six, the six million.
I actually want to clarify that further. So the resolution title is to, not to exceed, an additional amount not to exceed $6.8 million, but within, so that is an addition on top of a previously allocated, what, 12, $6,000?
Previously, previously allocated for both services combined was $9 million.
Okay, got it, sorry, I said.
At the beginning of the year, it was two separate resolutions. There was a resolution for the non-public charter for $3 million, there was a resolution for cabin vans for $6 million. With this resolution, we just combined the two. And that's why you're seeing the total of $6 million for that now.
So the total then is actually $15,984, correct?
For both of those services.
For both of those services together, it's, $9 million has been previously budgeted, and we're now adding $6.85 million.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. $15 million total.
Yes.
And that, I assume, was not budgeted.
What, we can get back to you, because I hear with the through line of the questions, and I want to make sure we actually have this. The question is, where is the funding coming from, and if it wasn't budgeted from, how are we, how are we looking at it for this year? And our team can take that back, so looking at both Eric and Chief Thompson.
That's fair.
Chief Stockdale, we can get that back to you.
Excellent.
By the, by our next meeting.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, just another question here, so I may not be reading it correctly, but the resolution authorizes an amount not to exceed $6.8 million, and then, in the content, it says an amount not to exceed $6.8 million, and then that $3.6 million is incorporated in that $6.8?
Yes.
Okay, got it, thank you.
And then, finally, the next five resolution are, resolutions are our equity and culture resolutions. We have 9.01, authorizing the employment of teaching, non-teaching, and school-based administrative staff. This is a routine monthly resolution authorizing a total of 81 new hires this month, the details which are set forth in Exhibit A attached to the resolution. 9.02, the reclassification of employees. This is a routine monthly resolution authorizing the reclassification of a total of 50 employees this month, the details which are set forth in the exhibit attached to the resolution. 9.03, accepting the retirements, resignations, and other separations of employees. This is a routine monthly resolution accepting a total of 53 separations of employees this month, the total of which are set forth in the exhibit attached, Exhibit A attached to the resolution. 9.04, authorizing the issuance of limited contracts for differential positions and the payment of additional earned compensation to employees. This is a routine monthly resolution authorizing limited contracts for differential, differentials and payment of additional compensation to a total of 123 employees this month, the details which are set forth in the Exhibit A attached to the resolution. 9.05, authoring, authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to committee for children to purchase digital licenses and materials for Second Step, an evidence-based social-emotional learning program for grades K through 8 and grades 9 through 12 in each CMSD school in the amount not to exceed $168,036. I mean, $168,036. With this resolution, the board will be approving the purchase of digital license and materials for Second Step. The Second Step Initiative is an evidence-based classroom program designed to facilitate youth's social and emotional development. The objective is to guide our scholars through the five core competencies of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. In addition, the middle school program highlights bully prevention, which will allow students to describe challenges they face when starting middle school and talk about solutions or ways to get help. Management of emotions will help students set, to set progress markers to assist in determining achievable goals and strategies. Empathy and communication are part of managing relationships and social conflict. This will allow our students to gain growth mindset skills and learn to describe the past changes they've done through, gone through, and the changes they want to make for their future.
Any discussion from board members on these equity and culture resolutions?
I assume that was budgeted.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the presentation of the resolutions on tonight's agenda. Is there any old business? All right. For new business, on behalf of the board, I would like to wish a happy birthday to Ms. Jones, who celebrated a birthday earlier this month. Is there any other new business?
Chair Alacott?
Yes.
I would like to wish Chair Alacott happy birthday this month.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Ms. Jones, and happy birthday, Chair Alacott.
Thank you. The next regular board meeting will be a board business meeting on Tuesday, January 28th, at 6:30 PM at Warner Girls Leadership Academy, 8315 Jeffries Avenue. The chair will now entertain a motion that the board enter into executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment and employment of public employees and officials, preparing for negotiations with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, and conferring with attorneys concerning disputes involving the Board of Education that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
So move.
Thank you. Mr. Stockdale, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Alacott?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebron?
Yes.
Mrs. Peak?
Yes.
Dr. Sridhar?
Yes.
Mrs. Welchow?
Yes.
Motion passes with eight votes.
Thank you. The board will now move into executive session. Following executive session, the board will return to this room to briefly conduct some further business.
Good morning, good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning, no beefing, hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here, so immediately they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feel safe, and just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen, but when the officers treat them in that way, like human beings, and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things, they're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building, is that relationship you have with kids, and if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results, not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time?
Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11 and 4 and were 5-0 in Senate divisional play. This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional Champions. I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year.
You go to the website, you type in the access code and you're in. Your kids' pictures are there and you could easily, I have kids at two different schools, you can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it.
Everything's right there. Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your phone.
It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day.
Good morning. Good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning. No beefing. Hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feels safe, and just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen. But when the officers treat them in that way, like human beings, and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things. They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building is that relationship you have with kids. And if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time outside of here?
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days I enjoy on my days off. Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11 and 4 and Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11 and 4 and were 5-0 in Senate divisional play. were 5-0 in Senate divisional play. Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11 and 4 and This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional were 5-0 in Senate divisional play. Champions. Champions. I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year. for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year. Champions. I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year.
You go to the website, you type in the access code and you're in. You go to the website, you type in the access code and you're in. You go to the website, you type in the access code and you're in. Your kids' pictures are there and you could easily, I have kids at two different schools, Your kids' pictures are there and you could easily, I have kids at two different schools, Your kids' pictures are there and you could easily, I have kids at two different schools, you can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it. you can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it. you can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it.
Everything's right there. Everything's right there. Everything's right there. Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your phone. phone. phone.
It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day. every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning. No beefing. Hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feels safe, and just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen. But when the officers treat them in that way, like human beings, and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things. They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building is that relationship you have with kids. And if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time outside of here?
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days I enjoy on my days off. Good morning. Put a lot of steps in these buildings. Good morning. Morning, everyone. It is applause and accolades all around for CMSD's Glenville Tarver Ludders. Good morning. No beefing.
Your kids' pictures are there and you could easily, I have kids at two different schools,
Hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building.
you can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it.
Everything's right there.
Our kids feel safe, our staff feels safe, and just in general, the building will thrive
Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your
Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11 and 4 and
phone.
It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing
when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
were 5-0 in Senate divisional play.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive
every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day.
This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional
Good morning. Good morning. with the kids before it becomes reactive.
Champions.
Morning, everyone.
I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson
Good morning. No beefing.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to
Hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here.
happen.
for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year.
But when the officers treat them in that way, like human beings, and make them feel
So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building.
special, they're not thinking so much about those things.
Way to go, guys, and keep up the great work.
Our kids feel safe, our staff feels safe, and just in general, the building will thrive
They're thinking about the relationship they're building.
You go to the website, you type in the access code and you're in.
It's the most important thing for everyone in a building is that relationship you have
when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
with kids.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive
And if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time outside of here?
with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days I enjoy on my days off.
Your kids' pictures are there and you could easily, I have kids at two different schools,
happen. But when the officers treat them in that way, like human beings, and make them feel
Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
you can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it.
special, they're not thinking so much about those things.
Everything's right there. Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your
They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building is that relationship you have
phone.
It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing
with kids. And if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results.
every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day.
Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time outside of here?
Good morning. Good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning. No beefing.[1469.16] Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days I enjoy on my days off. Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11 and 4 and Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11 and 4 and were 5-0 in Senate divisional play. were 5-0 in Senate divisional play. This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional Champions. Champions. I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year. for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year.
You go to the website, you type in the access code and you're in. Your kids' pictures are there and you could easily, I have kids at two different schools, you can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it.
Everything's right there. Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your phone.
It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day.
Good morning. Good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning. No beefing. Hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feels safe, and just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen. But when the officers treat them in that way, like human beings, and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things. They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building is that relationship you have with kids. And if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time outside of here?
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days I enjoy on my days off. Good morning. Good morning. Put a lot of steps in these buildings. Morning, everyone. Good morning. No beefing. It is applause and accolades all around for CMSD's Glenville Tarver Ludders. Hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feels safe, and just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen. But when the officers treat them in that way, like human beings, and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things. They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building, is that relationship you have with kids. And if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time? Outside of here?
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days. I enjoy all my days off. Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
It is applause and accolades all around for CMSD's Glenville Tar Bladers. Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11-4 and were 5-0 in Senate Divisional Play. This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional Champions. I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year. Way to go, guys, and keep up the great work.
Good morning, good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning, no beefing, hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feels safe, and just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen. But when the officers treat them in that way, like human beings, and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things. They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building, is that relationship you have with kids. And if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time? Outside of here?
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days. I enjoy all my days off. Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
Let us pop it.
It is applause and accolades all around for CMSD's Glenville Tar Bladers. Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11-4 and were 5-0 in Senate Divisional Play. This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional Champions. I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year. Way to go, guys, and keep up the great work.
You go to the website, you type in the access code and you're in. Your kids' pictures are there. And you could easily, I have kids at two different schools, you can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it.
Everything's right there. Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your phone.
It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day.
Good morning, good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning, no beefing, hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feels safe, and just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen. But when the officers treat them in that way, like human beings, and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things. They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building, is that relationship you have with kids. And if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time? Outside of here?
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days. I enjoy all my days off. Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
It is applause and accolades all around for CMSD's Glenville Tar Bladers. Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11-4 and were 5-0 in Senate Divisional Play. This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional Champions. I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year. Way to go, guys, and keep up the great work.
You go to the website, you type in the access code and you're in. Your kids' pictures are there. And you could easily, I have kids at two different schools, you can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it.
Everything's right there. Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your phone.
It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day. knowing every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day.
Good morning, good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning, no beefing, hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feel safe. And just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen. But when the officers treat them in that way, like human beings, and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things. They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building. Is that relationship you have with kids. And if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time? Outside of here?
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days I enjoy, all my days off. Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
It is applause and accolades all around for CMSD's Glenville Tar Pudgers. Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11-4 and were 5-0 in Senate Divisional Play. This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional Champions. I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year. Way to go, guys, and keep up the great work.
You go to the website, you type in the access code and you're in. Your kids' pictures are there. And you could easily, I have kids at two different schools. You can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it.
Everything's right there. Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your phone.
It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day.
Good morning, good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning, no beefing, hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feel safe. And just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen. But when the officers treat them in that way, like human beings, and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things. They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building. Is that relationship you have with kids. And if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time? Outside of here?
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days I enjoy, all my days off. Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
It is applause and accolades all around for CMSD's Glenville Tar Pudgers. Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11-4 and were 5-0 in Senate Divisional Play. This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional Champions. I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year. Way to go, guys, and keep up the great work.
You go to the website, you type in the access code and you're in. Your kids' pictures are there. And you could easily, I have kids at two different schools. You can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it.
Everything's right there. Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your phone.
It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day.
Good morning, good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning, no beefing, hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feel safe. And just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen. But when the officers treat them in that way, like human beings, and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things. They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building. Is that relationship you have with kids. And if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time? Outside of here?
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days I enjoy, all my days off. Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
It is applause and accolades all around for CMSD's Glenville Tar Pudgers. Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11-4 and were 5-0 in Senate Divisional Play. This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional Champions. I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year. Way to go, guys, and keep up the great work.
You go to the website, you type in the access code and you're in. Your kids' pictures are there. And you could easily, I have kids at two different schools. You can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it.
Everything's right there. Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your phone.
It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day.
Good morning, good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning, no beefing, hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feels safe, and just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen, but when the officers treat them in that way like human beings and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things. They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building, is that relationship you have with kids, and if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time? Outside of here?
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days. I enjoy all my days off. Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
It is applause and accolades all around for CMSD's Glenville Tar Butters. Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11-4 and were 5-0 in Senate Divisional Play. This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional Champions. I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year. Way to go, guys, and keep up the great work.
You go to the website, you type in the access code and you're in. Your kids' pictures are there and you could easily, I have kids at two different schools, you can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it.
Everything's right there. Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your phone.
It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day.
Good morning, good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning, no beefing, hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feels safe, and just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen, but when the officers treat them in that way like human beings and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things. They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building, is that relationship you have with kids, and if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time? Outside of here?
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days. I enjoy all my days off. Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
It is applause and accolades all around for CMSD's Glenville Tar Butters. Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11-4 and were 5-0 in Senate Divisional Play. This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional Champions. I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year. Way to go, guys, and keep up the great work.
You go to the website, you type in the access code and you're in. Your kids' pictures are there and you could easily, I have kids at two different schools, you can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it.
Everything's right there. Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your phone.
It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day.
Good morning, good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning, no beefing, hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feels safe, and just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen, but when the officers treat them in that way like human beings and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things. They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building, is that relationship you have with kids, and if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time? Outside of here?
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days. I enjoy all my days off. Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
It is applause and accolades all around for CMSD's Glenville Tar Butters. Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11-4 and were 5-0 in Senate Divisional Play. This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional Champions. I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year. Way to go, guys, and keep up the great work. Way to go, guys, and keep up the great work.
You go to the website, you type in the access code and you're in. Your kids' pictures are there. And you could easily -- I have kids at two different schools. You can easily switch from school to school and keep up on top of it.
Everything's right there. Like, everybody always has their phone with them, so you can easily access it to your phone.
It's a relief for me knowing that my child has the best chance that they can, knowing every day they wake up, they can go to school and, you know, take advantage of the day.
Good morning, good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning, no beefing, hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feels safe, and just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen. But when the officers treat them in that way, like human beings, and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things. They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building, is that relationship you have with kids. And if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time outside of here?
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days I enjoy, how my days are. Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
It is applause and accolades all around for CMSD's Glenville Tarballoters. Our athletic scholars finished the season with an impressive record of 11-4 and were 5-0 in Senate Divisional Play. This is the third consecutive year Glenville is OHSAA Division 4 District and Regional Champions. I want to express my sincere congratulations to the team and a shout out to Sincere Johnson for being named Division 4 Defensive Player of the Year. Way to go, guys, and keep up the great work.
Good morning, good morning. Morning, everyone. Good morning, no beefing, hold that up.
When the kids walk through the door, there's a personal relationship here. So immediately, they have a connection with an adult as soon as they've entered the building. Our kids feel safe, our staff feels safe, and just in general, the building will thrive when we have structures and procedures that everybody is aware of.
Typical day at James Ford Rhodes is being active with the kids, trying to be proactive with the kids before it becomes reactive.
When the kids come through, they understand there are necessary things that have to happen. But when the officers treat them in that way, like human beings, and make them feel special, they're not thinking so much about those things. They're thinking about the relationship they're building. It's the most important thing for everyone in a building, is that relationship you have with kids. And if it's positive, usually you're going to get positive results. Not all the time, but more often than not.
So what do you enjoy doing in your free time outside of here?
Putting my feet up and relaxing is the days I enjoy, how my days are. Put a lot of steps in these buildings.
It is now back in public session. The chair will now entertain a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the termination of a non-teaching employee. Thank you, Dr. Morgan. Any explanation on this resolution?
Yes, this is a resolution to authorize the termination of a non-teaching employee for violation of district policies, procedures, and rules.
Any discussion from board members? Mr. Stockdale, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBrone?
Yes.
Mrs. Peak?
Yes.
Dr. Shredar?
Yes.
Mrs. Welchow?
Yes.
Motion passes with eight votes.
Thank you, the resolution passes. The chair will now entertain a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the termination of a non-teaching employee.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Morgan, any explanation?
Yes, this is -- this resolution is to authorize the termination of a non-teaching employee for violation of district policies, procedures, and rules.
Any discussion from board members? Mr. Stockdale, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBrone?
Yes.
Mrs. Peak?
Yes.
Dr. Shredar?
Yes.
Mrs. Welchow?
Yes.
Motion passes with eight votes.
The resolution passes. The chair will now entertain a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the one-day suspension of a non-teaching employee.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Morgan, any explanation on this resolution?
Yes, this resolution is to authorize the one-day suspension without pay of a non-teaching employee for violation of district policies, procedures, and rules.
Any discussion? Mr. Stockdale, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBrone?
Yes.
Mrs. Peak?
Yes.
Dr. Shredar?
Yes.
Mrs. Welchow?
Yes.
Motion passes with eight votes.
The resolution passes. The chair will now entertain a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the suspension, the one-day suspension of a non-teaching employee.
So moved.
Dr. Morgan, any explanation on this resolution?
Yes, this resolution is to authorize the one-day suspension for -- without pay of a non-teaching employee for violation of district policies, procedures, and rules.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Stockdale, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBrone?
Yes.
Mrs. Peak?
Yes.
Dr. Shredar?
Yes.
Mrs. Welchow?
Yes.
Motion passes with eight votes.
The resolution passes. The chair will now entertain a motion to authorize the one-day suspension of a non-teaching employee.
So moved.
Dr. Morgan, any explanation on this resolution?
Yes, this resolution is to authorize the one-day suspension without pay of a non-teaching employee for violation of district policies, procedures, and rules.
Is there any discussion from board members? Thank you, Mr. Stockdale, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBrone?
Yes.
Mrs. Peak?
Yes.
Dr. Shredar?
Yes.
Mrs. Welchow?
Yes.
Motion passes with eight votes.
The resolution passes. There being no further business before the board, the chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn this 2025 Board Organization Meeting and Work Session. Hearing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.